It is important that residents understand how their city operates, the services it provides, and the importance of their active involvement. Now therefore, I, Bill Gans, Mayor of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, in recognition thereof, do hereby proclaim October 22nd through the 28th, 2018, as Florida City Government Week.[29.32][29.32](APPLAUSE). I don't know if we have anybody here to take this, but we'll make sure that this gets to the right people. Thank you very much. City turn? Vice Mayor Battle, do you have a comment?
Just a brief comment. Yes, I did. I was here this morning. I thought it was eight o'clock and I showed up at 8:30. It wasn't at 8:30, but the kids did come in about nine o'clock, which was their scheduled time to arrive. And I just wanted to say to you all, I had a great time. I always like interacting with children, no matter what the age. These were high schoolers. And the first question when we opened it up to the public was, "Well, what does the city clerk do?" Next year, the city clerk needs to come to Student Government Day. Thank you.
City Attorney?
Item 3A, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, making certain findings in designating the real property consisting of approximately 82.99 acres, generally located along Century Boulevard, confronting Military Trail, as a brownfield area pursuant to Section 376.80, Part N2, Part N C. Florida statutes for the purpose of rehabilitation and promoting economic development, authorizing the city manager as designated to notify the Florida Department of Environmental Protection of the designation, providing for an effective date. This is the first of two public hearings, Mayor.
Thank you. Commission comments before we hear? Anyone from the commission? No? Okay. We have someone here to make a presentation?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Scott Backman, on behalf of Toll Brothers. This item is a sister item to items 3B and 3C, which relate to the land use amendment and the rezoning. I do have a larger PowerPoint presentation. It does briefly incorporate the elements of the brownfield. However, I'll get to that when we get to the other items. As I believe you've all been made aware, the brownfield designation is essentially a tool that's being utilized to help, from a liability standpoint and an economic redevelopment standpoint associated with the proposed golf course redevelopment. A small portion, 25 acres of the golf course, is proposed for redevelopment, while the balance, about 60, and again, I'll get into all of this with graphics in my presentation, is proposed to be conveyed to Century Village. And the brownfield will cover the entirety of the former golf course. And all the city really has to do with regard to the five statutory criteria is essentially make the findings. We submitted a very thick application that's been reviewed by staff in the city attorney's office for brownfield designation. And then the onus really shifts on to Toll Brothers for a number of very complicated agreements that get worked out with Broward County and the state of Florida to ensure the necessary remedial measures are taken related to the arsenic that was previously used as fertilizer for the golf course. Hope that's enough of an explanation. Happy to go into a more detailed explanation. And like I said, it's kind of incorporated as part of my overall PowerPoint presentation for the next two items.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Oh, I'm sorry. Looks like, did you want to come up, sir? No. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item? We have some? Okay. Dan Johnson, our first speaker?
Dan Johnson, 1856, Discovery Drive, Deerfield Beach. You should have received a letter from Master Management. Hopefully, all of you have. If you haven't, I can provide that for you in support of this project. I stood in front of you a little over a month ago and asked for your support as we continue to negotiate with Toll. And I told you at that time that we were close, but we were not all the way there. The mayor wisely commented at that point that the last 10% is the hardest to get, and it certainly was. But we got there with the help of Toll and our attorneys. I'm happy to announce today that we not only have a deal, but we have a very good deal. This is beneficial to us as a village, and we think the city as a whole. This deal will allow for Century Village to secure land that runs from Hillsborough all the way to our eastern border and ensures that the property will be ours in perpetuity. Finally, this deal was not made overnight. It was years in the making, several different iterations with several different developers. And our kudos to Toll for being the ones that could complete it with us. We strongly support this project, and we're happy to continue to support it as long as it's needed. And we thank you for your time in this matter.
Thank you. Eli Oken?
I'm the president, excuse me, I'm the President of Master Management.
I'm sorry. Name and address for the record, please.
Oh, sorry. My name is Eli Oken. I live at 2041 Berkshire C., Deerfield Beach, Florida, 33442. I'm the President of Master Management. I want you to know that our board has worked very closely with Toll Brothers to develop the plan that we have signed off to. And we are very excited about acquiring the four parcels, approximately 60 acres of land, as it will give us an opportunity to develop for our people, for the residents of Century Village. And hopefully, it will better the quality of life that our people enjoy. So we totally, fully support this project, and we want to thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Commissioner Parnas, before we have the next speaker, did you want to say something?
No, no, I'll wait.
Okay. Dick Sioka?
Good evening. I just-
Name and address for the record, sir.
1049 Berkshire C., Deerfield Beach, Century Village.
And your name?
Dick Sioka.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I just want to say that this has been going on for a while now, and the culmination of this will be a great benefit to the residents of our village. And through all the negotiations, there's nothing but good faith being shown between Toll Brothers and Master Management. And as a result, we look forward to a long and healthy relationship with the property being implemented in such a manner. Thank you very much for your consideration. God bless.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public here to speak on this item? Not seeing anyone coming forward. I'm going to close it to the public. Commissioner Parnas?
My constituency, three-quarters of it live in Century Village. And since the beginning of the negotiations, I've been in touch and gone to many of the meetings. An overwhelming majority of residents are for the project. It gives the city more open space than it would have if the whole thing were built on. And we know what's happened to golf courses all over the county. The 60 acres that Century Village is receiving will be made into a park for its residents and will remain open space. No further development will be had because Century Village will own the land and will keep it as open space. So I make a motion that we approve this immediately.
Yes, and the way we're proceeding, again, this is one of three items on this. This is just the brownfield item. It will come to you before you on a second occasion. It's required to have two hearings, but basically, this would be approving it on first-
First reading.
It's a resolution, which is unusual. Normally, an ordinance has two readings, but the statute provides for this procedure. So this is on the brownfield item, and it would be a motion to approve the brownfield designation on first reading.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
Item 3B, in ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, mending the City of Deerfield Beach's plan, map designation for a 82.99 acre parcel along Century Boulevard, confronting Military Trail, from recreation, commercial to residential, moderate, 10 dwelling units per acre, and to recreation, open space, providing for an amendment of the future land use map of the comprehensive plan accordingly, providing for conflict, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date. Before you begin this proceeding, because this is a land use plan amendment from the open space and recreational designation to another designation pursuant to our charter, it can only be approved by a four-fifths vote of the commission. There needs to be four affirmative votes for this to be approved. And again, this is just a land use plan map. This is just a general designation capping the total amount of units as a maximum now. I don't know if this is going to be-
Mr. Backman, you have another?
And Scott, you're going to kind of blend yours into the rezoning, because there is this item, which is a land use plan map, and then the second item, and this will be adopting the map change. After that, there's a first reading of a rezoning, which would then carry the development approvals to the next level of more detail, specifically indicating the zoning category that it will be designated to. So I think, for everyone's sake, if you don't have an objection, Mr. Backman, you could present on both. Obviously, there'll be separate public hearings and separate votes, but I think to give a comprehensive view, that would be appropriate.
Certainly.
Again, this is the land use plan that we're on.
Thank you. Again, Scott Backman, representing Toll Brothers. So just a handful of slides, as the city attorney just mentioned, the item you're hearing now is the adoption of the land use plan amendment. You saw it for transmittal back in December. It's obviously gone through quite the ride since, number of meetings at the Broward County Planning Council, Broward County Commission, state of Florida has a review as well, a very substantial review, as you know. I know this commission has approved a number of land use plan amendments. And then first reading of the rezoning, November 13th, as the city attorney just mentioned, you'll hear a second reading of the brownfield, second reading of the rezoning, and then our site plan. I do have a copy of the site plan within the presentation for demonstration purposes, because obviously, you all want to see ultimately what you're going to be getting and what we've been discussing with Century Village. So as you've heard mentioned briefly, although I didn't show a larger map, there are five parcels that make up the golf course. Toll Brothers is solely interested in parcel five, based on the agreement that's been structured with Century Village. It has the most frontage along an adjacent right-of-way, which is Military Trail. It also has an approved access point at the signal at Goolsby, which will become a future four-way signal. There's also a development agreement you'll hear on November 13th, and there are off-site improvements, which include turn lanes, the signal, a number of other improvements. So this was really the perfect development parcel if there was going to be one within the Century Village golf course. Parcels 1 through 4, as part of our agreement with Century Village, are being conveyed to Century Village with the brownfield protections, with the remedial measures, all part of a private agreement between us and the village that, as you heard from certain members of Master Management and their board, was a tireless and good-faith effort on both parts that took a fair amount of time. This is just a map of overall Century Village. This is an internal map that they utilize to identify their various subdivisions within the community, and we've kind of utilized it to show you, as you'll see in just a moment, really what we're looking to do here. The change is to, the land use change is to a land use category that would allow 10 units to the acre. It's 25.1 acres, which would be 251 units. We are actually not developing at that intensity. We're developing at an intensity closer to eight units to the acre. You'll see that our site plan has 201 units on it. You'll see in just a moment on another slide, Century Village itself is actually developed at a density of about 12 units to the acre. The balance of the golf course is going to remain open space. The Century Village, I know, has plans to actually enhance the private park features within the village. We are taking it a step further, and I think, well, I'm getting ahead of myself, sorry. One other point I want to make, obviously, I think it's a little evident by the time that we've taken, the number of folks that were at our first planning and zoning board meeting, as well as our first transmittal meeting by the city commission, and then the support that you see here today. We had a number of meetings. There were hundreds of people in attendance at a variety of our different meetings. Toll Brothers, myself, all of the consultants were fully candid and transparent throughout the entire process with regard to what we were proposing to develop, what we were proposing to do for the village. And obviously, it took quite a bit of back and forth to get to an agreement that the parties agreed upon. But this just shows you some of the earlier meetings, and then since March, there's been a very significant amount of back and forth, phone calls, email correspondence, and more private meetings than the large-scale meetings. So existing land use is all what's called commercial recreation, actually is the more intense of the two recreation categories. We are proposing, as I said earlier, to change the development parcel to RM10. However, the balance, sorry, the balance we're proposing to change to reckon open space from commercial recreation. It is a less intense commercial category. It doesn't allow things like hotels that you could actually do in commercial recreation and provided the added protection to Century Village. This is the zoning map to Mr. Marotis's point, just going through everything. Currently, it is all your S open space category. We are proposing to change the development parcel to the city's RM10 zoning category. We've been working on, and you'll see next month, a site plan. I believe we've met all the requirements. There are no variances. We do meet all of the RM10 zoning standards. And then the balance of the golf course will remain open space. This is a close-up of the development parcel where you can see the proposed access from Military Trail at Goolsby. This is a conceptual plan colored. We'll obviously show a lot more detail when we present to you next month. Just some of the things that you can see, perimeter buffers, fences in certain areas, walls in certain areas, and just generally some of the open space and the care that we took, that our consultants took, to try and really develop a site plan. The first site plan that we really came out with, that we could accommodate on the site, showed 230 units ultimately for a number of different reasons, and trying to provide considerations and develop the most least impactful, yet viable, plan possible. We ended up at 201. And this is what we went through earlier, already been considered and approved. And Mr. Johnson mentioned the letter of support. Obviously, we received a copy of that as well. It should be within your backup. And I think, again, it just shows what a long way we've come since we started this process and what can happen when two parties really put their heads together and are determined to work out a mutually beneficial agreement. So happy to answer any questions. We have our entire development team here as well on both this item and the rezoning. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Commission comments before we open to the public? Vice Mayor Battle?
Scott, if you could come back. I met with Scott and his team earlier, I believe, this week, last week?
Yeah, last week.
Last week. And two concerns that I had. One was traffic, and the other was whether or not the association would eventually have to pay anything to help clean up that brownfield once we got it designated.
Sure.
And you were supposed to get back to me with-
Yes. When you say the association, I assume you mean Century Village, correct?
Yes.
The agreement that's in place has Toll Brothers solely responsible for any remedial measures necessary. Get into a really long and complicated discussion about cleanup levels and things of that nature. To answer your question, as simply as possible, yes, Toll Brothers is responsible for providing the brownfield designation with all of the required agreements in place to Century Village in accordance with our agreement. Yes.
Traffic.
Yeah, so remind me again what some of the specific questions. We do have a traffic engineer here, but if he doesn't have to come up and speak-
You did say to me that you would be putting a four-way stop there. And we talked briefly about 10th Street and how that's going to become very, very crowded.
Yes.
Now, let me put this out. I met with the MPO since that time, and I know we discussed the fact that, once we do, or the state does, the MPO, their plan is that the large trucks will still mix and mingle with the local traffic.
That's right. Yes.
Okay? And in my research, I found out, and where's Tom? Tom can assist me and verify this. I found out that the state has put in a measure in some places where they've said that even though the policy is that those big trucks cannot get on a managed lane, in some areas, they allow them to do that. So we're going to need all the help that we can get, if this goes through tonight, from you, in terms of dealing with the state, so we can get them to make sure that the traffic with those big trucks, instead of them being on 10th Street, that they will give us a reprieve or do whatever they have to do, and let those big trucks be on the managed lanes instead of mixing with my people.
Sure.
Okay? I want to hold you to that.
Understood. And Chris Hagan with Kim Lee Horn is our traffic engineer, one of the best in the business. He actually, we're working on a number of projects in South Florida. He's very familiar, not only with the 10th Street project, but a number of other projects that are happening. And if the city needs any help at all with those types of items, please don't hesitate to reach out and ask, and I'm sure that we'll be able to assist in whatever way that we can.
Thank you.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes, I just had a meeting with the MPO and discussed this with them. They tell me that there's enough land, and they plan to have the same amount of lanes for local traffic. As wide as they are now, the trucks that go on 10th Street now will have plenty of room to move the same way they did before. If that project is ever completed, then as now, there will be no difference in the width of the lanes or the ability of large trucks to move on 10th Street. And that was as of an hour ago.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Backman.
Thank you.
Anyone from the public care to comment on item 3B first? 3B? Name and address for the record, please.
Evening, yes. Dave Savinsky, 20 Westbury A., Deerfield Beach. And I just wanted to add a couple, two cents to this whole situation. It's really impressive to see all the work that everybody has put into this on both sides. And it's great to see private companies that work in an apparently ethical fashion, and to see a good management within an association come together and reach an arrangement that's going to be positive for everybody. This is a fantastic opportunity, both for the tax base, for the community at large, and also for all the residents of Century Village. So thanks to everybody.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public on item 3B? Not seeing anyone coming forward. I'm going to close the item to the public. We're looking for a motion just for 3B.
I'll make a motion to pass.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Drosky, you want to speak first?
Just briefly. I always like to over-disclose, so I'm going to disclose that as well, that I met with Mr. Backman and his team last week to discuss this project as well. Tonight is the land use and rezoning, so a lot of the particulars with this project will probably be more appropriate for the next meeting, not for tonight. So I'm going to save, you know, save those comments for our next meeting. I'd also like to disclose, while I did not receive a campaign contribution from the applicant, I did from Mr. Backman's firm. So I just want to get those out there. I always like to over-disclose. I'm very glad to hear that we have a new ally on our 10th Street fight. First time I'm hearing that, and I will definitely hold Mr. Backman to that as well. So he's laughing, but he won't be laughing later.[1405.76][1405.76](LAUGHTER). And I think it's great, too. I mean, I did receive the master management letter that everybody's referring to and the comments from the individuals that are here tonight. It seems like there's overwhelming support, and I'll be voting in favor tonight.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Parnas, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I would like to disclose, too, that in my campaign two years ago, I did receive a donation from Mr. Backman's firm.
Thank you.
Mr. Gans?
I'm sorry. Close it to the public. Item 3C, you can come up and speak on that if you'd like, unless you'd like to comment on this particular item right now. If you just raise your hand, yes or no, and we can reopen it to the public if you'd like. Permission from the commission?
Sure.
Do you reopen to the public, ma'am? If you'd like, come up with your name and address, please.
Cecile Baskin, 151 Richmond F. We're concerned about when you start digging up this land, this brownfield land, that we may have vermin all over our area, and who is going to take care of that? Whose responsibility is it?
We'll get an answer to your question. Is that it?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll close it to the public again? Mr. Backman?
Who are you going to call?
I'm going to call the vote. Mr. Backman?
Sorry. Scott Backman, on behalf of Toll Brothers. We're waiting on an answer. There are standard development, site clearing processes that take place. I'm waiting on the specifics of that, but it typically ensures that rodents, pests, vermin, things of that nature are dealt with internally to the site and not necessarily just scattering everywhere, but trapping, and that's what I thought. So it's trapping and things of that nature that's done on the site to ensure that we're not just, you know, clearing the site and putting the problem elsewhere onto the neighbors.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to call the vote, please. We have a vote. Commissioner Parnas, and then seconded by Commissioner Miller for 3B. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
Next item is 3C. In ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, rezoning approximately 25.1 gross acres located at 450 Century Boulevard from open space to resident, multifamily RM10, providing for a maximum of 201 town home units, providing for separability, conflict, and effective date. This is the rezoning portion. This is the first reading of the rezoning. There will be a second reading, at which time, a detailed site plan will be part of it.
Thank you. Commissioner Miller?
I wanted to ask the city attorney, is this also required for votes?
No, it does not.
Thank you. Anyone from the public here to comment on the rezoning portion of this? Item 3C.
Richard Rosenzweig, 97, Farinae, Deerfield Beach. If you look at the map that's laid out, then notice that on this plan, Toll Brothers has taken great care to move some of the site plan to suit some of the residents. It raised issues of where the water was being placed and where other things are going on. I also want the residents to know in this hearing that we are having further conversations with Toll Brothers and Master Management, come with some suggestions. I think that'll help in noise reduction and so forth. I'd like to also come back and talk to the city. I think that traffic problems that may exist in that area, there's a couple ways of addressing it. One is if we can get the area closest to the east gate. Right now, we have a U-turn further down by Military Trail. And if we can make that U-turn right by the east gate with signs posted, do not block entrance from Military Trail coming north and south, mostly coming north in rush hour. Police traffic and make it easy for people to get into the village without deterring any further traffic. The other option might be if we could get the way, the swale side along Military Trail, which I believe belonged to the city and the county, that could be worked with Toll Brothers to maybe move that swale and pave that and make it a permanent entrance into the east gate coming up there, take traffic off of Military Trail and into the Toll Brothers' property and our property. Might make traffic along Military Trail a little bit smoother and a little bit better. And hopefully, there's other things going on inside, which I'll meet with the residents to talk to them about other stuff inside the perimeter that might make it further with Toll Brothers and about Master Management, about possible changes there. So thank you, and we'll be back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public on the item 3C? Not seeing anyone to close it to the public. Commissioner Parnas?
Make a motion to approve.
Second?
We have a motion and a second.
Can I make a comment?
Commissioner Miller, you have a comment?
Yeah. I thought Richard's ideas were very good, but would that be Toll Brother or would that be FDOC? Who would take care of that extra, you know, changing where the people make U-turns on Military at the island and maybe make it an off-exit area? Because that area is very, very hard to get in, to manipulate around rush hour on the east gate that they're improving now.
There'll be some improvements will be part of a development agreement, not all of them that were suggested, but there'll be a turn lane, I think, to U-turn.
You know, you know.
As I'm trying to recall.
Scott Backman, yeah, when we come back next month, I'll present some more detailed exhibits that we're preparing for the development agreement. We are currently addressing, I believe, the turn lane situation. We've been working with the engineering department on that. We are also adding a right-hand turn lane into- We are also adding a right-hand turn lane into our development, not necessarily into Century Village. Don't know if there's the right of way there for that. We're also adding additional left lanes, some sidewalk improvements. And again, I'll go into more detail on all that when we present the development agreement next month, but we are making a number of those improvements.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Partes, do you have your light?
Yeah, I just wanted to make one comment. As we speak, we're about two weeks away from opening up the east gate, which now has an additional lane coming into the village to ease traffic on Military Trail. It means more cars will be able to get into the village more quickly. Where we have one lane now, there will be two lanes coming into the village. And I think that will alleviate a good deal of the traffic. With that, I'll make my motion. We already have. Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Drosky?
Still, yes.
Commissioner Partes?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes.
Item four is an ordinance to the City Commission, City of Deerfield Beach, amending section 14 dash 105 exterior building and structural standards of the City Code and chapter 98 Land Development Regulations, section 9855 B3 General Business, 9856I Industrial, 9856B I2 Limited Heavy Industrial, and 9877 Non-Residential Walls and Fences of the Land Development Code to provide additional regulations regarding outdoor storage, providing for conflict, separability, codification, and effective date. I think Eric made a presentation at the last meeting. I don't know if you have anything further. Eric?
This item is deferred, actually.
It's wanted deferred?
Yeah, sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, this item has been deferred. The planning zoning board made additional comments that we'd like to bring back to them.
I'm sorry, yeah. My apology, I should have read. So, well, it's not even going to be heard. So, you're going to re-advertise it? Item five, ordinance to the City Commission, City of Deerfield Beach, amending section 2 dash 456 permit requirements and conditions for work in right-of-way and section 3438 variances of the City Code and chapter 98 Land Development Regulations, section 9814 DRC Major Development Review Procedures, and 98 dash 85 Conditional Use to revise the public notice requirements creating section 98 dash 35 Public Notice Requirements for Development Permits of the Deerfield Beach Land Development Code.
City manager?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. If the city commission would like, Mr. Power can give a brief summary and presentation.
Yes, please.
Good evening, Eric Power, Director of Plan Development Services. So, yeah, I have a presentation for you tonight very quickly. So, about five months ago, six months ago, the commission had some comments about public notice. Commissioner Drosky actually requested of staff to review this project, and I know Vice Mayor Battle has made similar requests. So, staff has gone back and looked at the public notice requirements for the City of Deerfield Beach for development review. And I want to just make clear tonight that I'm referring to just development review. There are several other items for public notice, elections, for example. You know, that's not being discussed tonight. This is just items like, you know, like you saw before you today, rezonings, Platts, DRC comments, things of that nature. So, currently, you know, we do notice the public through two means. One is which a mailing of 300 feet. So, anyone who is in 300 feet of the exterior boundary of the parcel is mailed a letter explaining that there is an item going before the commission on a date and a time. And then there's also a legal notice in the newspaper, you know, the advertisement of the items and agendas that have for any commission hearing. So, those are the two items. So, we did some research on what other cities do and what we feel would be in the best interest of our city. And what we determined was we would like to propose an increase of 300 feet to 500 feet for the public notice purposes, the actual mailings themselves. We feel that this is comparable to pretty much every city we reviewed. You know, we always compare ourselves to like-in-adjacent cities, and virtually every other city had 500 feet, so that is what we're proposing. We're also going to require a new process, which we're just referring to as a sign-on-site. So, essentially, this would be a development notice that the applicant required to post physically on their property at any right-of-way. So, it's not just one sign. If they face two streets, they would need two signs, for example. This is just an example of what that sign would look like. Essentially, it would be a six-foot-tall sign with a white background and black letters in clear font, so it's visible and readable. You know, the items of information would be the same information that you would have with the regular notice, which essentially would just be the, you know, the type of project, the date of the meeting, the address, you know, the time, and any accessibility requirements that could be had. And with that, if you have any further questions?
Thank you.
Of course.
Commissioner Drosky?
I mean, I would just like to add that one, I commend you. Thank you for expanding the public notice from three to 500 feet. The reason for the sign, I just want to elaborate, is because, you know, what if this... Let's just make up a pretend parcel that is adjacent to a lake, for example, and the residences are 1,000 feet away from the lake. Well, it doesn't matter if it's 200, 300, 500 feet. They're still not going to get public notification of that. And Eric and I discussed this, and there's no real way to make it, that you can make the public notice, you know, one way for one project and a different way for another project. You can't make it arbitrary. So, he came up with this idea for the sign so that at least people that drive by could see it. So, it would be one additional layer of adding public notice that we don't have. So, that's the reason for the sign, is to give the notice that is beyond the reach that we can't get to before. We contemplated, you know, getting the reach as far out as possible. When there are certain physical barriers, there was no really workaround without making it arbitrary, and this was what he came up with. So, I thank you for putting your hat on, thinking outside the box and coming up with this.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Power, again, thank you for addressing this issue on our behalf. And you know, it's dear to my heart because of something that happened wherein the folk came in and they advertised, and that 300 feet included half of the canal over there, and there were no people living over there. And so, one of the things I want to ask you, does this particular ordinance then... Who's going to pay for the sign?
That is a great question. So, one of the things that we recognize, working with the clerk's office in this particular process, is that actually, the city currently pays for a lot of the public notice, and we don't think that's correct. So, what you'll be seeing at the next commission meeting with the fee schedule resolution will be in addition, so there'll be the second reading of this item, and the fee schedule resolution will be in additional fees for the applicants, and they'll be required to pay for, actually, they're providing us a fee to do the mailings because we still feel it's important that we handle that, but they're going to be paying for the label, the stamp, and things like that, as well as they're going to be paying for the advertising in the newspaper, which can be anywhere between $700 to $1,000. So, you know, that could be very expensive. So, that is an item that we will now be requesting the applicant pay for.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Miller?
The idea of the applicant paying for the advertising in a newspaper, is that customary in other cities, too?
Yes, yes. From our research, we find that most other cities do require that.
It is common.
It is common. I almost thought that put a burden on the developer, especially now you want to buy the signs, too, and the stamps.
We think that the cost is fairly minimal in that regard. The proposed fee is going to be $2 per envelope, which is basically the label. So, if you were notifying 100 people, you're paying $200. So, it's still a negligible fee and to the one applicant. But when the city pays for all of these over the course of a year, it adds up for the city, you know, as opposed to just every applicant paying their fair share along the way.
And the signs, how much do you anticipate them to cost?
Couple hundred dollars at the most. There are several companies that actually do this for a living. This is their, you know, what they do. They provide the sign, they provide the post. The person goes out and does the actual work for them. We, of course, can't recommend anyone to an applicant, but we'll provide a list of these names and numbers for people if they want to contact them. They can always do it themselves, you know, they can always bear the cost themselves, but there are people out there that do this work.
Well, it seems to me we went from no cost to the applicant for the advertising to almost $2,000 worth of cost between signs, mailing and such. Doesn't seem quite as consumer-friendly or as business-friendly as I thought most of the other changes you've been making lately have been.
I would agree with you. It's something we can discuss at...
I was thinking a compromise or something. Maybe pay half. I mean, from nothing to almost $2,000? That doesn't seem like nothing to me.
We can provide at the next commission meeting some additional information regarding the costs that the city bears on an annual basis to kind of...
Okay, yeah, I would help me.
To that.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Partes?
If we're going to compromise, why not look into the size of the project that the applicant wants? If we're talking about a $30 million project, okay, they can afford $2,000. If we're talking about something minor, we can adjust the fee accordingly so that it's friendly to the developer but gets the job done.
I like that idea.
So, just a thought when we come back.
Thank you. Anyone from the public care to comment on this item? This is item number five?
Yeah, I have a question.
Gwendolyn Clark Reed, 1430 Southwest Sixth Way, Deerfield Beach. Mr. Power's presentation, and he talked about getting back to the fee and the cost. The city has bulk rate. Will the city be doing the actual mailing? Or is the developer going to be doing the mailing? Who's going to be doing the actual mailing?
We'll get an answer to that question for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public care to comment on this item? We'll close it to the public. You can answer that question?
Yes, so currently, we're the ones who handle the mailing to ensure that it's mailed at the date that's required through the state statute. And we would still be the ones responsible for doing that, so we can ensure that it happens. All we're asking is that, essentially, a cost recovery, that the applicant reimburse us for the materials and the postage.
Okay. Commissioners, any comment? Would you prefer a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, passes unanimously.
Item number six, ordinance to the City Commission... Item number six, an ordinance to the City Commission, City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, amending chapter 98 Land Development Regulations of the City Land Development Code by creating section 9868 PDD Plan Development District, providing for conflict, separability, codification, and effective date. This is the second reading. Mr. Power made a presentation at the first reading. I don't know whether you wish him to do a reprise of it or...
I would be happy to, unless anyone has any particular questions.
We might have new audience members here today, so if you don't mind giving some brief overview?
So, the item, item seven, I'm sorry, item six. I'm reading the wrong one. I apologize. So, the Plan Development District is a new zoning district that the city is proposing that essentially would allow for redevelopment efforts for small, unique lots that may have something about them that cannot fit into a standard zoning criteria. So, there's a strict application process that the applicant would have to go through to prove that they meet this requirement, and that would have to be proved by the city commission.
Okay. Anyone from the public care to comment on this item? Item number six. Not seeing anyone come forward. I'm going to close it to the public.
I like the idea. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, passes unanimously.
Item number seven, ordinance to the City Commission, City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, amending chapter 98 Land Development Regulations of the Land Development Code by amending sections of Article 2 Deerfield Beach Land Development Code to revise provisions and regulations relating to the development review process. This is the major overhaul of the review process that Mr. Power discussed at the last meeting.
Mr. Power, a brief overview again?
Yes, thank you. So, as Mr. Rota said, this is a sort of an overhaul of the development review process, and we have looked at this process extensively to determine how we can make it simpler for the applicant to stream as many things as we can. We have rearranged the code so that items in the code are found in the same place instead of searching throughout the code. We're amending our applications as well and creating checklists and things of that nature for the applicant.
Thank you. Anyone from the public care to comment on item number seven? Not seeing anyone coming forward for item number seven. Commission?
I also like this very much and like to make a motion to approve it.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. And Eric, I do want to say in staff, good job on this. This is definitely user-friendly, so thank you. Big improvement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, passes unanimously.
Item eight, an ordinance to the City Commission, City of Deerfield Beach, amending chapter 98 Land Development Regulations, Article 9 Certificate of Use of the Land Development Code to revise or certificate of use regulation regarding site inspection, revocation, suspension, and appeal procedures and penalties. Again, this was some revisions, especially in the area of the revocation process and the suspension process that we thought were appropriate, given some experience we had in the past with the certificates of use.
Essentially, this gives us the ability to be able to police a little bit better and control situations.
Yeah, and it provides for, it provides more detail, the past process, which we went through with, you know, in Tropicana, and successfully, although we had to go to federal courts to finally on it. But it left, it didn't go through all the steps in the detail that we felt that it was necessary. So, we had to make some assumptions here and there, and we filled it in based upon that experience, and I think made it a little more detailed and clear for us to follow.
Okay. Anyone from the public care to comment on item number eight? Not seeing anyone come forward and close it to the public. Commission comments?
I like it. Can we make a motion to pass it?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, passes unanimously.
We have the public comment section. No comment shall be made related to the personal life or personal qualities of any person, and no language which would offend persons of ordinary sensibilities shall be permitted. This is, you have to, the opportunity to speak on anything that is not on the agenda.
Amy K. Tanner? Thank you. Thank you. Yes, sir. Well, I've spoken, I'm sorry. Sorry. Name and address for the record, please.
David Savinsky, 20, Westbury A., Deerfield Beach. I've spoken to the commission about this before. This has to do with our parking permits at the beach. And I find it very frustrating for half the year not to be able to utilize the beach because of lack of parking, despite the fact that I have a permit. And I've been down, and I've observed people acquiring resident permits, that wording keeps changing all the time, that have out-of-state car registrations, and they come showing one piece of paper, a light bill. A light bill. Anyone can have a light bill. I would propose that there be a little better vetting process for an actual resident, and that would be right here, the Broward County tax statement. This shows that I have a homestead exemption. Obviously, I'm a resident of Deerfield Beach and Broward County and Florida, for that matter. Everyone pays their taxes. I understand some people complain that they pay more taxes, but I'm here all year long. I buy items, I buy services, I buy products. I, it probably ends up being a wash. One more little piece of paper, my border registration card. Not to be kind of a smart guy about it, but basically, you all do a great job. I'm one of your constituents. I appreciate all the hard work you all do. But looking out for your constituency should be pretty high on your list, even though there may be pressures from large groups in large communities to let everybody have one of these permits. I just feel it really belongs to people who live here. And it's just a little perk, a little benefit of being a resident of this great community. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Ben Preston, 640 Southwest 14th Court, Deerfield Beach, Florida. I just want to actually know if there is a rule change and how the commission addressed the audience and how the... the audience and how the audience addressed the commission. The last time I was here, I made a comment. That comment was that I felt it right that one of our constituents be granted an extra minute. It was my opinion. Doesn't mean that everybody can share that opinion, but because of that opinion, I was called out by you, Mayor, and I think that was wrong. And if there is a rule change, I'm okay with that. If there's a rule change that you can call me out, and I can call you out, and I can respond, I'm okay with that. I said that I felt that the gentleman should have an extra minute, and you said normally, we give that extra minute. It's rare that we don't, as rare as Commissioner Preston coming to a meeting, and that was wrong, and nobody else said anything about it. You can't have it both ways. It's not about me coming to a meeting, but rather about all of us working together for the citizens of Deerfield Beach, seeing that we can get things done. I'm not looking to cause any issues. It's not about whether I'm coming to a meeting or not, but rather that whatever we do is in benefit of the constituents, me having a concern as a private citizen and all of you being in an administrative role. But if the rules have changed, I just really want to know about it, because to make it personal against me was wrong. It was wrong. So, I just want to know if there's a rule change. That's basically it.
Okay. Good to answer. Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Hi. Elise Miller Plotkin, 1998 Northeast 7th Street. I just wanted to bring it to your attention. I know that Patrick from Sustainable Management is aware of it, but I just wanted to let you guys know that on Southeast 9th Street and Ocean Drive or Ocean Way along the water in front of the Embassy Suites, the water level in front of the groynes gets very high. So, the water goes in front of the groynes. It almost goes up to where the sand is where the entrance to the beach is. I don't know if you understand what I mean, but the underneath where the people get married on that area, the water reaches up to the, up to that stand, right up to it underneath it, and then to the right of there, where you go onto the sand, the water level there on 9th Street goes all the way, almost all the way up to where you enter the beach. And I'm really worried about that because if we have a storm or very windy or the high tide, that water might be able to go onto the road. Now, Patrick told me it was rated critical. I just want you to be aware, because maybe you could expedite the loan or whatever that he knows about, to have the area made bigger, you know, further out, add more sand or something there, because to me, it's very worrisome how high the water comes in that particular area from 9th Street to the embassy, just so you know. So, if something happens, you were told by me. And then I just had another question. I was wondering, there's pink ribbon around the trees on Federal all the way south to Boca on Federal, there's trees. It's like almost all the palm trees and the trees, they have the ribbons. So, I was wondering, does that mean that those trees are all coming down? Because on some streets, it's almost all the trees. So, maybe you could tell me why they have those.
Okay, thank, excuse me.
Oh, it's breast cancer?
Excuse me. I'm sorry. I do appreciate the info, but...
Okay, so, if it's for breast cancer, I'm glad they're not cutting down the trees. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ricky Rosenzweig, 97 Farnemy, Century Village. Just a couple of things. One, on October 27th, some of you know I'm a volunteer with Honor Flights, and the 27th is our next flight out to Washington with Honor Flights with a full plane load, charged going out of a terminal form, coming back in about 7:00 Saturday night, the 27th. And anybody who wants to be there and see an extremely welcoming crowd of people for veterans coming back, you may have seen stuff on television tonight, which doesn't begin to show the appreciation of these veterans coming back off a day's trip, because they start out at 4:00 in the morning and coming back in at 7, 8:00 at night. You'd expect these veterans of some 70, 80, 90, some 100-year-old veterans coming back and being charged up like kids is unbelievable. Some of them get back, and they are so wired, they keep them asleep and just feel it's been the best day of their entire lives, and we treat them with a deal and respect that they deserve as veterans and for what they've done for this country. So, people who want to be there, I appreciate them being there and doing that. Then, secondly, I serve on CSAC, the Complete Streets Safe Program with the MPO, and on November the 3rd, a Saturday, we're having a walk around Century Village to look at the streets and so forth, and I'm proud to say that Century Village and Deerfield Village, Deerfield Beach actually, was the first city in Broward County to come up with complete streets in our program here. And this is a tribute to us and things that we've done and that we continue to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Michael Hudak, 34 Southeast 9th Avenue. Couple of things. First of all, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Manager, we want to thank you very much for attending the Cove Crime Watch Meeting that happened last week. We had over 140 residents there, and I thought it was very well-received. I want to thank members of the BSO who showed up as well. I know the next step is, is we have some signs that are in production. If you could just keep Joe in the loop on that so that we can keep the ball rolling, because I thought it was a very, very good meeting. Today, or yesterday, I visited the BioFlorida Meeting in Fort Lauderdale. BioFlorida is all of the biological companies in the state of Florida, and it's amazing how many of them there are, and the biggest issue is staffing. So, they really want to, you know, get employees from all of Florida working for their companies. Tomorrow, I'll be visiting South Florida Manufacturers Association, and that deals specifically with manufacturers in South Florida, and it's another great organization. And this leads me into the exciting news of the Career and Resource Fair that the city is holding on the 24th. I really do appreciate that. I think it's important that we help get our residents out there and get them employed if they can, but I also think it's important that we find an ability to increase the skill level of our local residents. You know, for years, we have proposed one path to success, and that is go get a degree, get a great job, and we've always looked down on the skilled laborers, you know, the plumbers, the mechanics, the welders. These are great careers, and if we can partner our high school with some of these trade schools in order to build up the skill set of our local students who are graduating, you know, not every kid wants to go to college, not every kid has the ability to go to college, but if we can get them some trades and increase their skills, I think it'll help our community as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan Hirsch, 330 Southeast 19th Avenue. I am requesting Andy Maratus during the portion of tonight's meeting when the city attorney provides his comments to clarify once and for all if citizens are allowed to refer to city employees by their name. For example, am I allowed to call Burgess Hansen by his name, Burgess Hansen? The reason I am asking for this is a result of Mr. Gans's actions at the last City Commission meeting. Within a three-minute stretch, Mr. Gans called out former Commissioner Ben Preston and myself on two separate occasions. I think Mr. Gans may also need a refresher on the definition of a bully. At the last meeting, Mr. Gans was upset at Commissioner Ben Preston for having the audacity to suggest citizens should receive up to five minutes to speak on a subject. Mr. Gans belittled Commissioner Preston by stating Preston clearly hasn't been to a meeting in a very long time, but Mr. Gans saves his best childish behavior for me. He insults me when saying maybe the drive from my former home and plantation was too far to get to a prior meeting. He also called me disingenuous at a recent meeting. The definition of disingenuous is not candid or sincere. Its synonyms are dishonest, untruthful, and deceitful. What did Mr. Gans accuse me of being disingenuous about? It was when I pointed out that Marty Keier, Broward County Property Appraiser, stated that the effect of the 25,000 additional homestead amendment on this year's ballot to Deerfield Beach, based on last year's numbers, would be a loss of 1.1 million in tax revenue. Nobody knows what the tax revenue lost to the city will be in fiscal year 2020, which is the first year the change would affect the city. So, how is I being disingenuous? I use the most current financial information available. If you have a crystal ball, Mr. Gans, and you know what year 2020 will hold, please share that information with all of us now. Remember, Ms. Cleo made a very nice living prognosticating the future. Mr. Gans also said last Commission meeting that he knows it's election season. I am very glad he is aware of that, because I would like to read something from the city charter. It's from Section 26-90, Item D. Any officer or employee of the city using his official position to support or oppose a candidate for city elective office shall be guilty of an unfair campaign practice and municipal ordinance violation punishable as provided in state law. I am only looking for a level playing field, and I call on the city attorney to enforce any violations of this section of the city charter over the next five months. I don't blame Mr. Gans for not giving the citizens an extra minute to talk at the last meeting. The citizens were about to wrap up their performance evaluation of Burgess Hansen as required in his employment contract. May I have another minute?
You can, Mr. Hirsch.
And after all, his major financial mistakes, his lack of transparency, his philosophy of tax and spend, and his handling of the recycling fiasco, all have been done with the blessing of First Commissioner and now Mayor Gans. As Burgess recently stated, what I do here is at your direction, City Commission. We carry out what you ask us to do. This is not my show. The citizens have no use for a city manager who clearly does not have the necessary skills to perform his crucial job effectively. Thus, the citizens of Deerfield Beach give Burgess Hansen a grade of F for his job performance over the last eight years, and highly recommend you seek a replacement. Hanging your hat on a credit rating agency upgrade accomplished by overbudgeting by $22.5 million in three of the last four years is not enough to raise your failing grade, Mr. Hanson. Finally, two people I wanted to thank, Commissioner Rita Massey, oh, sorry.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public?
My name is Joe Heinz, and I'm at 559 Northwest 47th Terrace.
I'm sorry, one moment, Mr. Heinz. Can you reset it? Thank you.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, I'd like to review some of the information I gave you folks last, at the last meeting. It was regarding the...
I'm sorry, Mr. Heinz. Hold, if you just pause it for a moment. I want to ask one more time if everyone could please silence their cell phones. I appreciate it. Sorry, Mr. Heinz, go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to recall some information I spoke about on the last meeting. It was about the review of the manager. In 2010, the city and the manager signed a contract. Contract calls for a review each year. Our manager has never been reviewed. You may recall, however, in September of 2015, Mayor Robb, Commissioner Battle called for review, and that review was going forth in that meeting until Commissioner Gans suggested that it be put off until January of early 2016. Of course, when January came around, the issue was never heard of again, and it kind of seems that maybe the manager has a guardian angel. We, the people of Deerfield Beach, are fed up of a lack of leadership. The mayor has recently stated you don't review the manager unless you wish to replace him. I got relatives that call it hogwash. The recent comments by the mayor that the manager may be viewed in a secret indicates a complete lack of respect for the citizens of Deerfield Beach and would be a violation of the sunshine law. The mayor should know better, and I shouldn't have to lecture him on this serious matter. It's not the mayor's sole decision to decide this matter. The mayor is only one of five members of this commission. The other commissioners have a responsibility and a duty to all the citizens of Deerfield Beach, and they need to stand up and have their say. This is a contract with the residents of Deerfield Beach. If this commission fails to call for a review, then you commissioners are shirking your duty. If the manager's actions are worthy of this commissioner's support, then the commission needs to publicly state that, and go on the record as why they support the manager. The list of poor performance of the manager is long. The citizens of Deerfield Beach give the manager a failing grade. What grade does this commissioner, commission give? It's time to speak up. Or the commission could take the easy way out and draw up a new contract, eliminate the clause that calls for the yearly review. Just a couple of reminders of what I talked about last, the last meeting. The manager has received $46 million dollars since 2016 and spent it all while crying poverty. I'll give you an example. On February 28th of this year, during the bond hearing, he bragged about the credit ratings and his staff praised the diverse revenue streams and the flexibility operational model that the city possesses. Then, in his letter to the commission regarding the 2019 budget, that's the letter that's at the front of the budget, he was crying poverty again when he complained of the limited revenue streams available. He failed to mention that there are over 160 taxes and fees collected by the city, including two taxes each time we pay our monthly electric bill. This manager deserves a grade of fail, failing from the citizens. I'd like to know what grade the commission gives. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Dan Johnson, 1856 Discovery Drive, Deerfield Beach. I wasn't going to speak or even stick around, but I guess there's nothing better to do on a Tuesday night. I want to speak about my experience with Burgess Hansen, and not really Burgess, but his staff. I think the sign of great leadership is delegation of authority where needed, and we have an experience at Century Village. We have 17,000 residents, and I'm speaking on behalf of all of them as their executive director, where we have, we've had the recycling nightmare that you all have dealt with and garbage. We've had infrastructure problems for the last 10 to 12 years, and at every turn, we've had the ability to reach out to the city, to a department that answers to Mr. Hanson, and at every turn, we get an answer within 24 hours. I don't think that that is status quo around the state of Florida. Being in other municipalities, I know it's not. So, I can't speak to the everyday resident, but for my 17,000, we have an amazing experience, not only with the commission, but the city manager itself. So, thank you.
Thank you.
John Slattery, 1455 Southeast 5th Place, Deerfield Beach. Just to follow up on this train of thought that's going on right now, you've got residents standing up saying whether or not they approve or not of the city manager's job. It would be nice if the commission would actually do, which is written into his contract, which is to give him an annual review, just as most employees go through on a regular basis to make sure that they're doing their job, get some feedback from the people that they answer to, so that we can be sure that he's doing his job and that you guys are checking on it, because my experience is that I don't feel that it's, he's doing the job he's supposed to be doing to the degree he should be doing it. It's great that this past gentleman says that problems are being resolved after the fact, but I think a manager should be managing issues so they don't become problems that be dealt with so much afterwards, like overpaying for insurance, letting contracts on recycling go past the date they should, and I can go on and on, but I won't. It'd be nice if you guys would actually do what's in his contract and give him an annual review.
Anyone else in the public?
Gwen Clark Reed, 1430 Southwest 6th Way, Deerfield Beach. I would like for someone to explain the, what happens when a resident has a swimming pool, and that swimming pool has to be drained for maintenance, and the swimming pool is refilled? What is, is there no rebate that's given to the resident? Just how is that situation handled? Because that water goes in the pool and it stays there, and I just recently had to do that, and I got a water bill that I can't believe. So, I wish someone would explain what the city of Deerfield Beach does when it comes to a person having to refill their swimming pool.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Not seeing anyone come forward, we'll close it to the public. Before we move on to the trouble... Before we move on to the trouble, answer all of these things. What's that? To Mr. Savinsky's point—and this is how you call people out. They ask a question, so you want to make sure they're being addressed. Mentioning their name and trying to address their question is different than calling someone out verbally, in my opinion. So, Mr. Savinsky, to make sure I got everybody covered, Mr. Savinsky, regarding the tax bill, I think that's a very interesting idea, and I actually like that idea. Voter registration card might be a little bit different. While it's a good encouragement for people to get registered to vote, as they should, I'm not—I think that might be a little bit limiting. I'm not so sure we'd be able to do that. Former—to the former commissioner, the rule has not changed, but the rule is different than what you stated at the last meeting, which I believe you said it was five minutes and then—or four minutes, and then it extended to five. It's actually always been three, extended to four. Am I correct in that, City Attorney?
Yeah, I think with—the ability to give an extra minute.
Yes, with the mayor's discretion to be able to do that. And quite frankly, I was surprised because it is very rare that it extended an extra minute that I don't grant an extra minute. So, my apologies if you felt insulted by that, like—because, quite frankly, it's so rare that I would have assumed that you'd have been here enough to know that it was that rare. I didn't know that—you—my apologies. I certainly—you're a former colleague. I wasn't trying to insult you, Commissioner, so, you know, my apologies for that if you felt insulted by that, and I certainly—that was not my intent. If we could have staff look at Ms. Plotkin's issue over at the 9th Street, TMC Street Suites As far as Mr.—and I'm going to say your name because I'm just trying to answer your question. Mr. Hirst, I don't believe I called out particularly anything regarding you when it came to—I made a general statement about election season. The people are going to come up and make a lot of different comments. That's not just you. There's going to be two districts up for election. You're going to hear a lot of this, and I've been here long enough to know it, and I've seen it, since going back way before many of you lived here. So I know what happens at election time when people come around, and I don't believe that your comment—it—one of the comments that was made and some of the statistics that were put out there were accurate. Okay? We can debate back and forth on this. I don't recall—I said maybe a blanket statement about people being disingenuous with some of the comments that they made and some of the statistics they bring up, and even tonight, we've got some information that people are just erroneous on. So that's just the truth. As far as the obsession with the manager, I find it odd that people will reference the city manager as if the people—as if they actually speak for the people in this entire city. I'm not even so bold to say that I do that when I state my opinion on something, and I re—and I'm the mayor of this city. We did have someone from Century Village who is put in place to be able to make comments like that. That's fine. You have your opinion, we have our opinion. We evaluate the city manager on a regular basis. You want to formalize because—and by the way, you cannot renew—and it's in the charter, right? It's not in his contract. Is that correct, or is it—no, it's actually in the contract. If you're going to redo that—if you're going to redo that, I—I don't understand—I understand that maybe making some formalization of it the process, but it's not there now. There's nothing that says how you do it. It wouldn't be a violation of sunshine law for each one of us to individually do any type of review that we choose, based on the way the contract's written.
I don't have it in front of me, but I don't think—
If we stand all together in a private room and do that, then yes, it's a violation of sunshine law, but clearly, that's not a violation of sunshine law if you're to write something up on someone individually, not discuss it or share it with each other until it's put into public record. That's the way it works. So, again, my point is not trying to insult or belittle people. I find it interesting, this sudden anger—I think—I—I remembering that meeting, I don't see it that way. So if you were offended, my apologies if you were. Certainly not my intention, and I don't think I was, but if you felt that way, then certainly my apologies on that. The gentleman who talked about—or former state rep Gwen Clark Reed, I don't know any city that gives a rebate because you have to, on your own private pool, get free water to refill it. I've never been presented with that question before. I've known enough people, lived in South Florida my entire life. You got to refill your pool, you got to refill your pool, and it's on your dime, it's not on the taxpayer's dime. So I've never heard of that before, but I believe that's the way we operate. Is that correct?
Can you verify that?
Yeah, but we can—we can look into that for you. Let me make sure I have everyone's questions answered. I think I have everyone. My apologies if I haven't gotten to you. I think that's it. Next item.
Just for clarification. Yeah, just quickly, regarding the beach sticker parking, part of the registration process and the reason why we ask for utility bills, not all residents own property. Many residents that live here full-time do have a utility bill. That's why we request a utility bill, just for clarification. Thank you.
Thank you.
City Attorney?
Yeah, just wanted to address—I—I'll give you a final opinion when I have the rules sitting right in front of me, but I don't think the rules address whether you prohibit referencing people by name. Yeah, I—I—I don't see—but I'll—I'll review that.
But comments are to be addressed to the commission.
But no, they're to be addressed, yeah, but you can mention people's name and things of that sort, of course.
Okay. I hope that answers your question, clarifies that for you. And I won't mention your name. Commissioner Miller?
Yeah, for the record, people speak about me having never reviewed the city manager. I'm going on 10 years serving the city. I've reviewed the manager every single year, every single year. Guess what? I give him an A. I give him an A for the staff he picks. I give him an A for the way he deals with people. I give him an A for the way he doesn't gossip. I give him an A for his professionalism. I give him an A for staying here when he could have went to a place that was walking him—welcoming him, where he could have taken his horses and the rest. My fellow commissioners have also given him high regard because we actually changed the regulations that said that our city manager needs to live in the city. We made—we took away that rule so this city manager that we value so much could live in a place where he can have his horses and still serve our city, when other cities have been looking to hire him. I've given him an A for almost 10 years. I continue to give him an A. I'm tired of hearing the people—the by the way, the people who have run because they don't like the city manager, I've never seen one of them get anywhere near close to winning an election. Not one. And I can tell you, the mayor's won three times. One time, he didn't even have an opponent. I've won three times, and I've always been a proponent of this manager. So you could say all you want. I'm very happy with our manager. I'm saying it publicly, and that's my review for this year, sir.
Commissioner Miller, yes, go ahead, please.
We have a consensus agenda, nine, 10, and 11. Did you want to take them individually, or—
Let's do them individually, if you can.
Item number nine, a resolution of the city commission of the city of Deerfield Beach approving a work authorization for Kenneth R. Carlson, architect, in the amount of $89,950 to provide professional services for the preparation of construction documents and associated services for renovation of the Environmental Services Building.
City Manager?
Yes, just quickly, I'd like to have Mr. Good just give a brief overview about this project and the need for it.
Wonderful. Good evening, Mayor, City Commission. We have a brief presentation. We think it'd be helpful that the Assistant Director of Engineering gives that presentation on what we're going to be doing tonight. Thank you. Priscilla?
Hi, good evening. Priscilla Segalnick, I'm the Assistant Director for Engineering and Operations for Environmental Services. So tonight, we're here to ask for your approval in a work authorization for Kenneth R. Carlson in the amount of $89,950 for architectural and engineering services related to the renovations at the Environmental Services Building. Our main issue is we want to modernize our facility. We really want to improve our customers' experience, facilitate our emergency response, and create more versatile and collaborative workspaces for our staff. So on the left, you'll see an image of our lunchroom. This lunchroom is currently being used as a conference space. It's a very versatile spot in that we get to microwave our lunches and at the same time, hold conferences. So what we're trying to do is actually have dedicated spaces for functions, really want to create a better customer experience so we're not welcoming our public into our lunchroom and providing a space for emergency response where we can hold emergency response team meetings and create those working environments that we would value for our staff. A little background about our building, we're located at 200 Goolsby Boulevard. You're familiar with the water treatment facility. That's where we're located. The division houses our city's utilities, water and sewer, infrastructure, stormwater, engineering, capital improvements, and building maintenance. Building maintenance and stormwater are recent divisions to be added to our building, so as you can see, we're growing, expanding, and our building has remained unchanged. So the building was originally constructed in '92, and the interior spaces are really lacking for that reception space, office collaborative conference space, and spaces for document retention and our inventory. So our project's goals would be to improve the customers' experience, improve the public's experience when they come in. They receive an engineering permit from us, so right now, what we'd like to be able to do is receive them in that front space of our building, provide that interaction with them, and have them receive their permits as would be appropriate in that front area of our building. Very important is our emergency response. As you're aware, we're some of the first responders in the event of an emergency. We house our staff overnight in our facilities, but we don't have these accommodations. And a funny story from last year, I've been told that the folks were eating burgers for three meals a day, so we'd like to modernize our kitchen so we have that ability to provide for different meals throughout the day in the event of emergency. We want that conference space that can provide for versatility, whether we're meeting with the public or functioning as a secondary emergency operations center. And important to us is engendering that collaborative space so that functionally, we can be organized within the building by division. Currently, we're all cut up in various different offices and spread throughout the building. We want to optimize our warehouse space, really get into lean inventory and housing only as much as we need for our water and sewer responses and road and bridge inventory, and then very important is our document retention. So currently, where we are is in procurement. We've solicited proposals from three pre-qualified architectural firms from our CCNA. Those include Walter Zachariah, Kenneth Carlson, and Bermello Ajamil. Kenneth Carlson was found to be the most responsive to the scope of services. We've negotiated a fee which we believe to be commensurate in scope, and we are currently funded to do this project, so the funding is available. The content of the contract—you see a list in front of you. In the first task, we're looking at program development. So this is really interviewing each of the key stakeholders within the building, understanding the various functions of our divisions, so that we can do appropriate space planning for each of the divisions. The space planning will be that second task. That'll provide for that review and comment period where we can change things around and see what helps to accommodate each of the functions. And then, once we have a definitive plan, we're going to go into construction documents and the traditional design-bid-build process, which is completing the construction documents, bidding, receiving our permits, and then going to construction. So our consultant is going to work with us through each of these tasks into project closeout, completing that project. So today, we're here to ask for your recommendations so we can proceed with this work authorization to complete this work. Any questions? Yep, thank you.
Commission comments? Commissioner Drowsky?
No, I think this is sorely needed. If you've ever been to that location, you know, as soon as you walk in, it's need of a rehab, so this is something that's desperately overdue and needed. I thank Priscilla for making the presentation tonight. She's been a great pickup, by the way, from Virginia, and we're happy to have her—kind of—I'm going to go on a tangent for a second, but she's also heavily involved in the Southwest 10th Street project as well. And we were at a meeting with FDOT, and they were complaining, "Oh, we can't put together a modeling for Southwest 10th Street." And she pulls out her cellphone, and she says, "Yes, you can," and pulls out a video of a model that she did and says, "Oh, by the way, this only takes like a week or 10—10 days to put together." So she really put FDOT in their place, and she's a great addition to the city, and I think she has taken the title away from Chad Gressik as the hardest last name to spell.
Thank you.
Light marriage.
Not seeing any more comments. Anyone from the public care to comment on this item? Not seeing anybody come forward. We'll close it to the public.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion from Vice—
Second.
Vice Mayor. Second Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Drowsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
Item number 10, a resolution approving the award of an invitation to bid for assorted apparel and miscellaneous items to—for the—with related to the city logo to Shark Marketing LLC.
City Manager?
Yes, if you would like, I can have Mr. Santucci give a brief overview. It's fairly straightforward, as the backup indicates.
Good evening, Dave Santucci, Assistant City Manager. The item before you is the result of purchasing and contract administration division, taking a look at the net spend of apparel items throughout the city, and making a recommendation to put out an invitation to bid so that the larger purchases can fall under the umbrella of this award. This award is to multiple vendors. It is a non-exclusive contract, meaning that it doesn't take away our opportunity to do business with our local vendors, as well as these vendors for smaller dollar purchases. With that, I can answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions? No, I think it's pretty self-explanatory here. Anyone from the public care to comment on this item? Not seeing anybody come forward. We'll close it to the public.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Drowsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
Item 11, a resolution of the city commission of the city of Deerfield Beach ratifying modifications to the 2017 to 2020 collective bargaining agreement between the city of Deerfield Beach and local 1010 District Council 78 of the International Union of Painters and Allied Trades, authorizing the city manager to take all necessary actions to implement the modifications. Approval of a collective bargaining agreement.
City Manager?
Thank you. Just quickly, I will have Ms. Robin give a brief overview because I do think it's important for the public to understand what part of—what the contract does involve financially. I think she did a very good job on negotiating, along with the city attorney's office staff, and hopefully, we'll be able to move forward. The union did ratify by majority, by a pretty overwhelming majority vote yesterday. Thank you.
So what you have before you tonight is not a full-blown collective bargaining agreement. We had reopeners only on two provisions in this contract. One was the article on wages, one was the article on health insurance. We negotiated tentative changes on the health insurance contributions, so we were able to amend the splits of what the employees paid based on the different tiers within the health plan, which should help alleviate some of the costs that we are associated with claims. We also negotiated a 2.2% cost of living adjustment. I believe the budget was 2.5%, so we were able to come in under budget for that. But those are the only two changes that are before you. Everything else in the contract remains the same, and we're not open for negotiation.
Anyone from the public care to comment on this item?
Yes, my name is Joe Heinz, 559 Northwest 47th Terrace. I was—
I was wondering, how many members are in this union, if anybody has a count of that? And the 2.2% cost of living increase, how much is that going to cost the city for that increase?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan Hirsch, 330 Southeast 19th Avenue. I just wanted to commend Amanda Robin on the wonderful job that she's doing as Head of Human Resources. I know that when she took over that department, it was an absolute mess, and I appreciate her efforts. The one question that I have for her is, what was the exact cost of living index that she used this year? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Not seeing anyone come forward. I'm going to close it to the public. City manager, can Ms. Robin answer this?
Yes. If the commission approves.
Offhand, I don't actually know the number of eligible members of the International Union of Allied and Painter Trades. Just for explanation purposes, they are not required to pay dues, so it's hard to say. I'd have to run a report to see exactly how many. I can tell you the vote went 87-5, so that probably helps at least with that answer of the question. As far as CPI, we looked at a couple of different things. The union came forward with CPI of South Florida, which actually was higher than what we were looking at at the 2.1 that was addressed during the budget hearing. So they actually came in and had evidence of the South Florida, I believe was at 2.9, and so we were able to come in at 2.2.
What was their original offer to the city?
They requested 10%.
10% raise.
And no changes to health insurance.
And the, what is budgeted currently?
We budgeted further, 2.5%.
2.5, and you got it at 2.
And I do apologize, I don't offhand have the exact number for what that 2.2% runs across the board. I can get that for you at a later date. I don't have it offhand tonight.
Okay, will you provide it for us so we can get to the gentleman?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Just for clarification, this only pertains to the IU PAT. The PMSA still need to ratify in order to accept whatever they decide to. So, this is strictly for the IU PAT. Doesn't represent non-represented employees either. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Parnas, do you have a comment? Did you want to, or you go to the second?
I didn't see it, yeah.
I remember the meeting we had, Ms. Robin, when we all discussed what our goals were and the fact that you were able to negotiate under budget and have them accepted, and everybody's happy, is an enormous job, and I know it was a difficult undertaking, so I want to commend you on the work that you do.
I'd like to make that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. We have a motion, a second from the vice mayor. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
Next, item 12, is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, authorizing submission of Cycle III application to the Broward County Metropolitan Planning Organization for Crystal Lake Drive.
City manager?
Yes, again, would you like to have Mr. Power just do a brief summary?
Yes, please.
Good evening again, Eric Power, Planning Director, Director of Planning and Services. It's not working. So, staff is requesting your help in us applying for an application. There is a requirement that there is a resolution before city commission. So essentially what we're doing, C-Slip is a fairly new program the MPO has been offering. Essentially, that just stands for Complete Streets and other localized initiatives programs. So, this was their attempt, when you have very large projects, multi-multi-million-dollar projects, and how do they compete against smaller projects, things that may be less than a million dollars, things like that. So, this is their attempt to try to provide for smaller projects as well as larger projects on a consistent scale. And what this is basically funding for anywhere from a half million to about $2 million. And the application deadline is upcoming, and one of the requirements is that city commission, again, provide a resolution support for the staff to apply for this grant. So essentially, tonight, you're not asking, you're not applying any support in what will actually be done, it's just you're giving support for staff to move forward and requesting the grant or seeking funds for the grant. The design would actually occur after being awarded. This is a multi-year phased project. Even if we were granted this award, it would still be several years until this project was actually completed due to the way the money is given to the city. Essentially, though, what this entails, or what we would actually be trying to do, is for the areas of Crystal Lake Drive and Northwest 45th Street, we've been looking at doing pedestrian improvements, media improvements, intersection improvements, bike lanes, and pedestrian lighting. As you're probably very aware of this area, we've seen just an influx of development in this area over the last couple of years, probably more so than this area originally was intended to have. So we would like to see what we can do to increase the, not just the transportation, but the pedestrian process. So essentially, this is the scope of the area, the Crystal Lake Drive area and the 45th Street area right there. And just as a brief example, this would be a cross-section, you know, that we would have the ability for multimodal vehicles, bikes, sidewalks, landscaping, lighting improvements, drainage improvements, and things of that nature.
Commission comments? Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes, Mr. Power, I like that idea, and it's something that's going to benefit not only the people in that area, but all of Deerfield Beach. I drive that road quite often, going to see people one way or the other. And I am glad that you're coming to this commission and asking for the ability or for us to give you the right to do that. As your representative to the MPO, I get very, very mad when they started talk, started start talking about C-Slip, and I look down the list, and there's no C-Slip application from the City of Deerfield Beach. So I've been on the warpath now, trying to figure out, Tom and I, what we're going to do. So it's a great effort, and I would ask that my fellow commissioners and the mayor support this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Parnas?
Yes, I want to also comment on this. I think it's a great idea. I know Crystal Lake Drive quite well, and I hope this will take effect after all the trucks stop wrecking it.
Yeah.
You have my support on this item.
Anyone from the public care to comment on this item? Not seeing anyone come forward, I'm going to close it to the public.
Make a motion that we approve?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
Next item, we have comments by the city administration, city attorney. City attorney?
Anything?
None, other than I actually have a copy of the rules in the packet, and it doesn't, you know, there is no connection on using people's names.
Thank you.
But the comments have to be addressed to the commission.
Thank you. City manager?
Yep, thank you. Just to go over a few things quickly. So first of all, just, as you know, I spoke to each of you individually yesterday during the financial services preparation and review of the millage rate certification of compliance for submittal to the Florida Department Revenue. City staff realized that the approved operating millage rate of 6.1267 mils is 0.0197, or what is 19 thousandths of a mil above the allowable maximum rate that is permitted by a simple majority vote. If you recall, the vote for the millage was 3 to 2. Even though the millage rate is maintained at the same level as previous year's operating millage rate, we barely exceed that maximum millage limitations in which the city commission must approve by a supermajority vote. The reason for the discrep, for this discrepancy is a state formula that determines the local governing board's voting thresholds, i.e. simple, super, or unanimous. State provides a formula which computes the city's calculated rollback rate adjusted for a change in what they call the per capita Florida personnel income, or personal income. That's how they determine what's the number of required votes throughout the state. Once this was brought to my attention, we took immediate action, as you well know. I spoke to you, and I also spoke along with Andy with Department of Revenue. So first of all, it's important to note that there's not any loss of revenue or other penalties when we meet compliance, which we will. There is a very straightforward procedure outlined in Florida statutes. We know what those applicable procedures are to achieve compliance, and with the Revenue Department's assistance, we plan to expedite the process smoothly. In no event will this allow for the operating millage rate to go above the previously recommended rate of 6.1267. That's very important to note. When we do receive the notice from the Department of Revenue, then we'll proceed with the city commission to re-advertise and to hold another second public hearing regarding the millage rate and also the budget. At that meeting, you can either reaffirm your simple majority, you can take a revote to determine if you can re, or to receive the supermajority vote, which would be a 4 to 1 vote, or you can look at even lowering the millage rate at that meeting if you'd like. And we'll be in contact with you to schedule when that meeting will be. And moving on, we also have the, dealing with Crystal Lake, which I know both Commissioner Parnas and Mayor Gans have talked to me about, BSO Law Enforcement, they have in fact issued many moving violations, and now both Engineering and Planning and Development Services through the Building Division will either withhold permits or suspend work on the site if heavy traffic continues to go through the residential streets on Crystal Lake. And then lastly, on Southwest 12th Avenue, which is near the public's distribution. As you know, we've had an ongoing issue with tractor-trailers parking there. Mr. Good with the Streets Division will be putting in concrete barriers sporadically along there to not allow them to park. And, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you.
Well, let me just say this. Sitting up here since 2009, this calculation, the formula, this has never come into play. It might be very small, it might be a minor thing, but in my opinion, this is a failure of staff to do what they should have done right. You needed to make sure that we had this information to know exactly what needed to be done in order to pass this the way it should have been passed at that meeting when we made the decision. This might seem minor, and in many ways it is, but looking at this, you want a review? This is my review of this particular situation. This is a failure of staff, and it's unacceptable. So, that's all I got to say on that.
Item number 13, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, renaming Bran Hilda Richardson Knowles Memorial Park to Bran Hilda Richardson Knowles Memorial Park and Historic Cemetery, providing for conflict, providing for ineffective data.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. First of all, let me thank the Historical Society, Ms. Tanner and Ms. Emily Lilly for helping us with this particular project. What we did was we went to get a historical, we applied to have a historical marker created for the new historical, well, the new Bran Hilda Richardson Knowles Memorial Park. And when they sent it back to us, they reviewed everything, and they suggested to us that since this was a cemetery, that we add an historic cemetery onto the historical marker. It is a change that I think that we ought to support, so I'm asking the mayor and my fellow commissioners to vote positively on this item.
Thank you. Anyone from the public care to comment on this item?
Dan Hirsch, 330 Southeast 19th Avenue. Having been at every single commission meeting having to do with the cemetery from when we first discovered that there were human remains there, and looking to where we are now, I think it is wonderful, and this is the very last step in the process, and I'm very, very happy and pleased that we've gotten to this point, remembering where we started from. Thank you.
Thank you. Good point. Anyone else from the public? No, we'll close it to the public then? I will say this, to echo his statements, we're a long way from where we were when we had people standing up, sitting up here in this seat, saying there are no bodies in the ground. And to write this long, to write this very wrong, it's been been like this for far too long, is a good thing.
May I make a motion that we approve?
A second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, passing unanimously.
This is the addendum, a resolution approving a special event permit submitted by Island Water Sports to host Midnight Madness on October 19th, 2018, 7 o'clock to midnight. It's at 1985 North 82nd Street.
Commissioner Parnas?
And anybody here representing?
City manager?
Yeah, Chris, I have a question or two.
Just quickly, before Ms. Cottrell speaks, I would like to have Ms. Petty just go over special event and the process.
You okay with that?
Sure.
Yeah, thanks.
Good evening, Kara Petty, Assistant City Manager. So typically, the applicant would put in a special event application well in advance to our special events or community events division. They would pass that through to BSO, Planning and Zoning, everybody else, and figure out if there were any, if there was a need to come to commission in order to get a variance or not. Unfortunately, in this case, we were unaware, did not receive a special event application until we actually saw the event on social media. So staff did reach out to Island Water Sports, and then they actually did put an application in, and what we realized is that it went from a daytime event to a nighttime event. So the fact that the noise is going to go on after 9 o'clock, there'll be amplified noise until midnight, and then a cleanup afterwards, the raffles will be going on to, oh, sorry, 10.
If you could address us, thank you.
Sorry. That's what prompted us to be able to have to bring this in order to commission, because administratively, we cannot allow that.
City manager?
No, I was going to say, if you have any questions, certainly Ms. Petty is available. Thank you.
Ms. Cottrell? Commissioner Parnas?
Yes. I know in your application, you said there's no alcohol.
Correct.
How many, and you expect about 500 people?
Lindsay Cottrell, age 20, Southeast 16th Court, Deerfield Beach, Florida. We do not serve any alcohol or food at the event.
Yeah, but there are restaurants and bars all around your event.
Correct.
And it is possible for some of your celebration people to imbibe. What kind of security will there be to protect our beaches, the surrounding businesses, and the neighborhood? Since this is a nighttime event, I would like to see what securities in place to protect the neighborhood.
Absolutely. Security is obviously a very high priority for the event, being that it is in the evening. I would like to clarify, the event is promoted till midnight, those are the store operating hours. The outside activities do completely finish at 10:00 p.m., and amplified sound is scheduled till 9:00 with just announcements going till 10:00. So no music or anything like that passing 9:00 p.m., trying to stay within that noise variance as best as we can. As for the security, we hire all BSO officers for the entire duration of the event and on until 2:00 p.m. after the event to make sure that the site is completely cleared and that we don't have any discrepancies for the rest of the patrons that are going to be there. It is a free event, and we obviously do have to take into consideration of the restaurants and the bars that are, you know, operating on a Friday evening. We have switched the event from daytime madness to midnight madness because it's our 40th year anniversary, and this will probably be the only time that we do this event again. So it is not something that we look to do in the future. We're just kind of going out with hurrah for the 40th.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Not seeing anybody come forward and close it to the public. You can sit down, Ms. Cottrell. Commissioner Miller?
Yes, I spoke to Lindsay, and I had some concerns also. Since I lived down there, gonna be 24 years, it originally was midnight madness, and it morphed into take time madness. There was a time when it actually closed off A1A. It has gone a lot of different directions. This direction is literally just closing off the street literally right in front of their store, not even to the west Barracudas parking lot, so it doesn't interrupt at all the west side entrance to the parking garage. Alcohol is a concern, but this is basically for the people, most of the people that buy this stuff from their store are under 21 years old, so, and most people would need their parents of affluence to buy this stuff in their store. So those people were, obviously, the older teenagers will be there by themselves, but I have never in my 20-something years experienced a problem, but I'd like it scaled down. I was concerned. I asked her about the going to 12 o'clock, and then when she told me that the music is gonna stop now, I thought she said 10. Now I think I just heard her say nine.
Well, we, we.
So maybe you could clarify.
Just to be super clear, so there are no misunderstandings, that the music is scheduled till nine. We would like to pull the permit to 10, just, we all know how events go, things can happen, and I would hate to ask for nine, and we go to 9:15, and then we'd be in violation of that. So I'd rather give us that little bit of buffer till 10 o'clock in case anything happens and if we were doing any announcements in that time. We do do raffles, it is a large fundraising event, so most of our raffles are announced right at the end of the last band, so we want to make sure that we have that just flex space in case anything were to go over.
Okay, and then my further comment is, I literally walked, I don't know if it was last night or the night before, right past that curve I used to blinker that I could go across the wings and such. The music was pretty loud coming out of a brews room, in fact, even louder than I thought it should be, but, so I don't think this'll be any more intrusion than what I'm hearing out of brews room lately. I haven't been taking that route at night too much, so that's louder than I used to remember it should be. But a one-time event for iconic, iconic landmark store that attracts people to our beach from all over the place, so iconic that we're willing to take her dad's name and put it on our, our new pavilion. This is a family that's had impact, positive impact, positive for the kids, trying to keep them active instead of doing bad things, doing healthy things, sport things, sponsoring Bible studies, doing things of that nature, as opposed to letting them just party hearty and smoke pot under the pier or something. So this is a family business, second generation running it. It's been an attraction to our city. This event will even help our other restaurants in the area, not be a negative on them. I think its disruption of traffic is minimal, it's just a few hours. So I hope my fellow commissioners and the mayor are supportive of this. I do recognize that a mistake was made, and I think you would agree, that I got the distinct impression it was not, it was a mistake, not intentional mistake.
I will personally like to just go on the record apologizing for, because I do know, as I've been planning events in the city for eight years, and I know the process, and the application is very available, and to be honest, it was just a complete mistake on my behalf, and I should have communicated more with the city. And I apologize for that, especially to your team, because I know how busy you guys are, especially in this time. So it will not happen again, and not that we are owed anything from you guys, the city has done immense amount of stuff for Island Water Sports, so we're very thankful for whatever decision is made for tonight, and yeah, just know that that process will be much more attended to in the future.
If there's no other comments, I'd like to make a motion.
Commissioner Drosky?
I for one appreciate the mayor culpa, because approving this last minute when everyone else goes through the process and does it correctly, making an exception for anyone, I don't care who it is in the city, is very difficult to do. But I understand mistakes are made. I think someone from Island Water Sports, I read, I don't know if it was Lindsay here tonight, but somebody wrote a very long explanation explaining why the mistake and what happened. So that does go a long way. Mistakes happen, I get it. Just please don't let it happen again.
With that being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes?
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Thank you. Commissioner Miller?
Yeah, I, I want to, just one comment. My family had to use the BSO fire rescue last night. Two vehicles came to my house. My sister-in-law lives in my house. I went down to check on her, she's downstairs, my wife and I sleep upstairs. I came down to check on her, and she was in her bed in pain. I don't want to be too graphic, but she was beyond what I could do, so I asked my wife to call 9/11. They were there, and by the time I got back downstairs, they were in front of my house. They recognized she needed to go to the hospital. They even called another truck, because in her state, she was gonna be, have to be put in the sheets to kind of get her out of bed, onto the stretcher, and to actually get some more paramedics to help with that, carrying her out, was useful, and they were able to accommodate that. So they did a spectacular job. It's not the first time they've come to my house, they've come for me, they've come for my father, they've come for my wife. So I'm very grateful for our fire rescue, and they did a great job last night, and I don't even know the status of my sister. My wife was there all night, she was in emergency room all night, and we don't have a status report yet of how she's doing, but I'm very grateful to live here and with such a good safety net. So thank you, and hats off for the BSO and fire and police. That's all.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Battle?
Have a couple of things, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Manager, I need somebody to look into this. Don't do what I did. Citizens brought me a whole bunch of these. I know we have a no solicitation policy. I got on the phone, I called the company, and I promptly got cursed out. So have somebody list, look into this, and please let them know that we have a no solicitation problem. It's becoming, we're bordering on a crime safety issue for us in that neighborhood with everybody just walking around knocking on doors, saying, you know, that we can't keep them from doing this type of stuff, so please look into that. On November 3rd, the Dixie Highway Walk will be held in conjunction with the MPO. I'm asking staff, probably Mr. Good in the back of the room, they have the walk scheduled from Hillsborough to Sampa Road. Oh, no, 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 no. Okay? So if you would get with them, or somebody from staff would get with them and try to cut that walk down, I do have some people who will walk that, but I want to walk, and I want to complete the walk, and I cannot physically go from Hillsborough Boulevard down to Sampa Road and back on that walk. The Job Resource Seminar will be held on October 24th at the Hillsborough Center, 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. If you know somebody who's interested, who want to start your own business, who wants to get a job, just help some people out one way or the other. That's the time to do it. If you want to go back to college, if you want to go to college, BCC is coming to the area again at the Hillsborough Center on October 19th at 5:30, and December 4th at 6:00 p.m. to tell everybody how you can, number one, go back to college, number two, go to college, or if you just want to go and audit some classes for those of us that are over 55. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, District 3?
District 3, yes, I'm gonna make a statement. I'd like those who say they speak for the city. Citizens are against this. Well, there's 80,000 people. I represent close to 20,000. If you represent the city, please come with signatures of those that agree with you when you say, "I represent the citizen." The citizens of Deerfield object! How many? Who are they? And are they willing to stand with you? It's easy just to accuse people, very easy. So I'm asking you to put your money where your mouth is. Show up with 20,000, not 40, which is half the city. Show up with 20, 10,000 signatures, and say, "The citizens," not two or three or five, but 10,000, agree with you. Then maybe I'll give you more credence. Until then, have your three minutes of fame. That's all I have.
Thank you. No applause, please. Commissioner Drosky?
I thought that was because it's my turn.
It does sound about your level of applause.
I hope you're gonna mention the Fall Festival, Mayor, because it's not my district. I was gonna mention it, but that's this Saturday, so jot it down, I guess. October 27th, in the Villages of Hillsborough Park in District 4 is, is the Halloween hoedown. It is a Saturday night this year from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., so we're expecting probably a record crowd. So if 2,000 screaming kids is your cup of tea, make sure that you come to the Villages of Hillsborough Park on October 27th. But in all seriousness, it is a great event for the kids. They have Halloween costume judging for various different categories of the ages of children, families, even pets. It's a great evening. October 31st, in the Deerfield Mall, which is the public shopping center at Hillsborough Boulevard and Powerline Road, is the BSO Trunk or Treat. Carlos does a fabulous job putting this event together. It's a lot of behind-the-scenes work, that's his, his baby, his brainchild, so great, he's trying to hide, but it's a great job, and it's a safe environment for the kids to go trick-or-treating. And last but not least, that I have heard tonight, the Broward League of Cities told me, notified me today that I have been appointed to their Legislative Committee as a sophomore commissioner. I take that as a great, you know, honor and achievement for not me, but for the city of Deerfield Beach and where we have come with this commission, and where Broward County is recognizing Deerfield Beach as a player in this county, and the people that we have on this commission and the city staff that we have, we are being recognized, not just on a city level, not just on a county level, but really on a state level. So this is not for me, this is for you. And to give Deerfield Beach such a prominent voice and on such a prominent legislative-making proposal committee, I think goes a long way to show where we have come and really where we can go in the future as a commission. So I, to my colleagues, thank you for giving the city the reputation that we have, and let's keep up the momentum.
Thank you. I have to follow that, thanks. The Fall Festival, yes, is at Pioneer Park this weekend, it's 12:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. Come out, meet your neighbors, enjoy it, it's a great event. Halloween festivities, we're having it at Ovita McKeithen Park on the 26th from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. Definitely more of the same. And, you know, one thing to keep in mind, we always talk about when school comes back, Halloween is tricky. You're getting a lot of kids out there. Be safe, be smart, look out for them, and look out for yourself as well. So please be careful with that. I believe that's all I have for tonight, so thank you.
Much into it, Jared.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.